Where's Fournier?
Good evening and good evening and welcome to the Mount Clemens City Commission meeting for Monday, June 1st, 2020. We'll call the meeting to order. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Here.
Fournier? Fournier? Hammond?
Here.
Krab?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Voorhees?
Here.
Okay, very good. Announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports.
You need to excuse Laura, Commissioner Fournier.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Fournier?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Fournier.
The board.
Okay, all those in favor? Those who oppose? Okay. Motion passes. Agenda item number four, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. The City Commission vacancy, would you like to read that one? Ms. Borjes for our city clerk? Do you want me to do?
Do you want me to read the memo there?
Sure.
At the last City Commission meeting, the city attorney explained the court order issued April 20th, 2020, extending the deadline for filing for office and some of the issues with the order. On Monday, May 18th, 2020, the judge who issued the order, the court order, heard arguments to change requirements listed in the order. As a result, the prior requirement, the candidates file a statement of organization with the Federal Election Commission or the Bureau of Elections or establish a candidate committee under the Michigan Campaign Finance Act by March 10th, 2020, no longer apply. Therefore, the three candidates who filed nominating petitions for the City Commission vacancy do meet the filing requirements, and the Macomb County Clerk has notified them that they will be placed on the August 4th, 2020 ballot as candidates for the Mount Clemens Special Election for City Commissioner. This gives the city a total of five candidates for the Office of City Commissioner with a partial term ending November 2021.
Very good. Thank you very much. Agenda number, agenda item number five, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. This is the portion of the meeting for public participation. During a Zoom meeting, it's a little bit more complicated than just coming to the microphone. So we ask that you first just give us your first name if you are interested in speaking. We will then write a list down of who would like to speak, and then we'll call on you in that order. At the time of your, of your time to speak, we ask that you give us your name, your full address, and be mindful of our three-minute rule. If, is there anyone out there on our Zoom call that would like to speak today at today's meeting? Okay. Anyone who would like to speak? All right, hearing none. There is a time, there is another portion and an opportunity at the end of the meeting for public participation. So if you are just joining us or join us a little later, you'll be able to do that. We'll move on now to approval of, oh, sorry. Never mind. Yep, number, agenda item number seven, administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. City Manager Don Johnson, do you have any responses?
Yes, we had two questions raised at the last meeting. First, a resident asked why DPW Water Department plant workers are not receiving hazard pay since they're deemed essential and emergency responders. The City Commission voted to extend hazard pay only to those employees who have the highest exposure risk, which comes from direct public contact. As part of their regular duties, firefighters slash emergency medical technicians perform life support assistance on patients who may have the virus, dial-a-ride employees, transport passengers who may have the virus. The other city employees do not have such direct contact with the members of the public who could be exposed or could actually have the virus. Their principal exposure comes from each other. And then the second question was a resident asked about any movement or updates on medical marijuana permits and what direction they're going. We have nothing to actually report. We have several applicants who have received conditional approvals, but no licenses have been issued yet. The conditionally approved applicants have until December to complete the requirements for a license.
Very good. Thank you. Agenda item number eight, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the City of Mount Clemens Commission meeting minutes on May 18th, 2020. The board.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Roll call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to general business. Agenda item nine A, High Tech Service Agreement.
High Tech System Services Incorporated has provided network support services for the City of Mount Clemens since June of 2003. They've worked with the city by reducing costs in 2005 and holding a reduced price for six years. Over the past 15 years, High Tech has maintained servers, computers, and equipment as well as provided needed IT software backup, security, and support for day-to-day operations. Currently, we've got three agreements with High Tech, which all expire July 1st. They have combined the three agreements into one and agreed to continue to provide support services at the existing 2012 agreement costs, which are $4,138.51 per month for an additional 12-month period. We're recommending approval of the combined agreements with High Tech. It's the opinion of administration that no competitive advantage would occur to the city if these services were put out through the RFP process and any new service provider would face a steep learning curve to understand our system before they can be effective. We don't think it would be a good idea to undertake that kind of situation right now. So we're recommending approval of the contract with High Tech. This agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney, and we've actually made several changes at his suggestion in the contract.
Do I have, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the contract with High Tech for computer and network services and authorize the Mayor and City Commissioner to keep an agreement.
Support by Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell. Is there any questions or concerns?
Yes. Yes, I'm looking at this. And on the quote, it's, there's a difference in the backup monthly premium. It's not included in their chart on page eight. As is their chart on page eight, it does not include the remote support 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. I was kind of, and then that's not spelled out. It just says monitoring basics, you know, server. So I don't know if that's an oversight.
I'm looking for it right now. Page eight?
When you look at the quote that's on page one, okay, or versus in, on page six in the written statement of work, it includes remote desk help, but it's not included in the chart on page eight. Neither is the remote backup monitoring.
The chart on page eight, I think, is just showing their standard plans.
But it's remote support 8 to 5, Monday through Friday should be included.
We can confirm that for you tomorrow.
I will need a confirmation of that, and I will need a confirmation that the data backup, the remote backup monitoring is also included.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Comments?
I have one further. It says here that our tech care staffing is six hours per week. I would like to know if those hours carry forward. For example, if we only used four hours in May, do the other two hours carry forward?
He's generally on site for about six hours per week.
Has there ever been weeks where he hasn't been?
Can I, can I time everyone out? I think that was Commissioner Fournier, correct?
I apologize, lost my internet there.
That's okay. We just need the record to show that you joined the meeting at 7:12.
Thank you.
I haven't.
Thank you. Okay, carry on.
So it's a valid question. Have they always, every week, they're there for six hours doing what?
Generally, the way this works is Jennifer keeps track of service requests, and she dispatches them to the various locations on the day. He's usually here on Wednesdays.
Okay, but if he's not here for four hours?
It's not an hourly contract. It's a monthly contract. You're agreeing to pay $4,138.51 per month for these services. You're not paying on an hourly basis.
I understand that, but the quote specifies tech care staffing six hours per week. That is my question. If they don't spend six hours per week, does it carry forward to another, to the, you know, to the next week or to the next month?
Or could we ask the question another way? Sorry to interrupt, but if it goes over six hours in a week, are we supposed to pay?
Yes.
I mean, that's a question, right? Is it a monthly contract, or is it a monthly contract based on hours?
Okay, I don't have that answer for you tonight. I'll get it for you.
My question has been, have we in the past gone over the monthly service fee? And if so, you know, how significantly?
Again, I can't answer that question. Not recently, but I don't know about forever.
Okay. Does anyone have any further questions?
When does this expire? I mean, we could do this at the next meeting, correct?
You could.
Okay.
Then I make a motion to table this until the next commission meeting.
We have a, we have a current motion. So Commissioner? Yeah, who made the initial motion?
Commissioner Hammond.
Is it your will to amend your current motion?
Yeah.
You have to amend it.
Move to table the item until the June 15th meeting.
Motion to amend the High Tech Service Agreement till the next commission meeting on June 15th, 2020.
The board.
Okay, Commissioner Campbell supports. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the amended motion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda 9B, submission of the 2020 Local Bridge Program application for the Cracker Bridge. Sorry, City Manager Johnson?
Actually, this is Mr. Woods' report. Is Jeff online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
You want to read the description there?
I'm confused anymore. Do we have to move?
No.
Really, you should. We're getting ahead of ourselves.
Okay, so then, do I have a motion, please?
Motion to allow the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents and have a certified copy of the resolution be submitted with the application for the local bridge program funding.
Support. Okay, supported by Commissioner Fournier.
You need the first, you've got a first motion before that. Look at the first resolved.
The program application?
Okay. I see. So we need to back up.
Motion to submission of the 2020 Local Bridge Program Application for the Cracker Bridge?
Hello, please leave a message after the call.
Oops, sorry. Hang on, we need to mute some people.
Now, the first motion is, is a resolution that the City Commission wants to participate in the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program and affirm that the City Commission is committed and will provide local funds estimated to be $1,184,000 for payment of all design, engineering, construction engineering, and 5% of the total cost of construction in the event the project receives federal and state funding. That's the first motion.
Can I just, can I make a really quick timeout here? I think City Manager Johnson, while we're in this and kind of in the thick of this, I think we need to kind of reformat the way these are being presented because how the motions are lining up are not, are not quite clear. So I think we need to make some, I mean, we're all working through the new system, but I think this is, we need it to be a little clearer. Okay, so now we're on the, we have a, we have a firm grasp of where everyone is on this, right? The first motion?
There's, there's two parts to the motion. There is, it's really one motion. There's two resolves in it. You only vote on it once.
Okay. I make the motion that the Mount Clemens City Commission participates in the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Bridge Program for the following project and affirm that the City Commission is committed and will provide local funds estimated to be $1,184,000 for payment of all design engineering, construction engineering, and 5% of the total cost of construction in the event the project receives federal and state funding. In addition, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents and that a certified copy of this resolution will be submitted with the application for the local bridge program funding.
Thank you. Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Thank you. Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wood, we did a reconstruction or rehab project in 2006 on the Dickinson Bridge. And I just kind of wanted an assurance that the Dickinson Bridge will be able to handle the increase in traffic with the Cracker Bridge out for, for, it looks like a couple of months. That diversion, you know, that's the only way to move traffic, you know, kind of from, you know, west to east there.
Right. The Dickinson Bridge is of different construction than the Cracker Bridge. And with the, you know, I do a biannual inspection of the bridges. And the Dickinson Bridge is in much better shape. And especially with that rehab, that was almost a million-dollar rehab that was done back in 2006. And definitely would be able to handle that.
Okay. And then my only other comment would be, thank you again, Mr. Wood, for finding these grant opportunities for us. You rock.
Mr. Wood, how many times have we applied for this grant?
This, this particular grant, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I've been applying for this grant on a, on a pretty regular basis since 2004. The problem with this particular grant is that there's only so much grant money is available. You know, if it's, you know, $70 million and each of these bridges cost $5 million, you're not getting much done. And the, the, there's a lot of, a lot of bad bridges out there. The worse that this bridge gets, the more likely we are to get funded. It was put on a list with MDOT quite some time ago to make sure it was funded. I can't remember the actual year, but it, but it was on a, like, their 30-year program or 20-year program to make sure it was funded within that timeframe.
Is there a worse condition than serious condition three?
Yes, closed.
That's a problem.
Do we, do we budget yearly for, just in case we were to get this?
No. If we were to get this, likely costs in construction and everything wouldn't even be until like 2022. So you're a couple of years out. You know, we tried to watch the fund balance and would hope that there's money available in the fund balance. But if we were to get that, that $5 million, you know, grant, the possibility to bond may have to exist at that time to, or, you know, to borrow money to get that taken care of.
Okay. Very good. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Wood? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please. Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item C, 9C, request approval to enter into an agreement for building official, building inspection, and mechanical inspection services for the 2021 fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
The City approves the agreement between Matthew M. Berman to provide building official, building inspection, and mechanical inspection services for the 2021 fiscal year and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. One, is there, is this any increase from last year?
This is not an increase. This is the same, same amount, I believe. This is the third year that we're at this amount, maybe even longer.
So, so traditionally, over the years, I have always voted no on these contracts for a couple of reasons. Not because of the quality of work, not at all, but because I would like to see a night and a weekend somewhere during the month included for our residents who work and find it difficult to take the time off work, and especially when residents don't get paid to take time off work. But I had a lengthy, I also had a lengthy discussion with Community Development Manager Tingly today about the number of inspections and breaking it down per cost. And this contract is actually to the benefit of the city, other than no night, no weekend.
So could we ask, I know Commissioner Mensah has brought this up at least two years, and it would be helpful, I think, to contractors to getting things done if we could have some inspection outside the normal hours, and that would go for the electrical and plumbing as well. Has this ever been discussed after one of these meetings? Have we looked into it?
We have not, yeah, I mean, we have not looked into it, you know, outside of the fact that they are independent contractors and we can't set their hours. But, you know, I don't really know of any other community that offers that, that type of service. I think it's fairly, you know, common and expected that, you know, city governments work Monday through Friday, typically do not work on weekends or evenings. I'm not sure what the demand necessarily is for that. I think that would be a logical first step if we did want to move into that direction. But if we were to do that, then we might want to explore moving these inspectors back to city employees, where we would have more direct control over their hours.
I know that always comes up, but in some ways, we already do have control over their hours because they work Monday through Friday. And they do work with them.
Not exactly, and there's a test, an IRS test that we're trying to adhere to to keep them as independent contractors.
I'm very aware of that test, but it, we are restricting them through Monday through Friday. So if they were to be able to be, work outside those hours, it would be, it would be based on demand versus set hours. And if demand set came up, that we have a lot of residents who would wish that it would be a little later or on a Saturday morning or something like that. If the demand is there, it could be part of the inspection. On a Saturday morning or something like that. If the demand is there, it could be part of the inspection agreement.
Yeah, it's not like we're dictating, okay, Wednesday, every Wednesday you have to, you know, work, uh, till seven. We're just saying, pick a night, pick a weekend. That still gives them the control over their schedule, but, um, I, I think for the purposes of tonight, that. Um, Mister, Mister Tingly is aware that this is an issue and we can come up with some kind of method to track this. You know, how many requests do we get and, uh, uh, you know, what do the contractors, you know, feel about that? And if they get a request, you know, in July for somebody to inspect in, on a Saturday because of their work schedule, you know, will they honor that? So.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Did we pay these people? Cause they've been on, basically on furlough, right? Since March, the March first of April?
Um, they have been, been paid, but they have also been doing, um, doing inspections on a very limited basis. Um, throughout end of March, April, um, we continue to do inspections, uh, for McLaren. We wanted to make sure the hospital was moving forward. Um, so they were doing inspections on, uh, unoccupied portions of that building. Um, as well as there are some other things that popped up. The, if I read the Victory Inn, we had inspectors out there. Um, and then since, uh, so about two weeks now, um, that we have been offering inspections again since the construction industry. Um, was allowed to start again.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, roll call please.
Mensor.
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes. Moving on to agenda item number nine D, request approval to enter into an agreement for electrical inspection services for twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
Oh, boy.
Motion to approve the agreement. With Fusion Electric Incorporated to provide electrical inspection services for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
Support.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the electrical inspector contract?
I'm going to repeat the whole thing about, well, I won't go into the whole thing, but I'd like to see a night and weekend. I'd like to see, uh, um. If a resident asks for that, that the electrical contractor agreed to it. Uh, a Saturday or a night and that, uh, Mister Tingly somehow, you know, has a discussion with his people, uh, for the future. And we track any kind of request for a night and a weekend.
I would agree with that. I think we should look at what the demand would be. Instead of having this every year at this time.
We will explore that.
Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item, oh, sorry, just agenda item nine E, request approval to enter an agreement for plumbing inspection services for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement with Joseph A. Orr to provide plumbing inspection services for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract or the agreement.
Uh, was that Commissioner Hammond?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do, is anyone have any questions or comments?
Same story.
Do we know it?
Weekend, crack it.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda note, item nine F, request approval to enter into an agreement for rental inspection services for the twenty twenty fiscal, oh, I'm assuming we want twenty twenty-one on that, right? Uh, twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
That's correct.
Okay. Go, go ahead.
Motion for the city to approve the agreement with Michael L. Barron to approve, provide rental inspection services for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. And the mayor and the city clerk are authorized to execute that agreement.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Uh, any questions or comments?
Been thing, night, weekend, track it.
Okay, um, anyone else? Hearing none, uh, roll call please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Agenda item nine G, approve, uh, purchases and payments and invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, roll call please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Agenda items number ten, consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond and Mensor. And, uh, uh, roll call please.
Crowe?
Yes.
Mensor?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to agenda item eleven, city manager's report.
Okay, the stay home, stay safe order was extended. Uh, I am not sure what she announced today and how that's going to affect us. Uh, but we'll be looking at that. Uh, right now I'm assuming that we're going to, uh, be bringing back staff on the fifteenth. Uh, the twelfth is a Friday. Uh, we do have a reopening plan, which is going to all the department heads, uh, for review tomorrow. Uh, it calls for returning staff currently working from home when the order is lifted for office employees. Uh, city hall will reopen to the public three days later. Other buildings will remain closed. Uh, the reopening plan will be shared with commissioners via email next week. Uh, if, especially if the governor's ordered, speeds things up on us, I will poll commissioners and determine whether we need a special meeting, uh, to review and approve the plan. Uh, Ice Arena, this is a heads up, uh, that we're probably going to be scheduling a special meeting in a month or two. Uh, the Ice Arena needs significant maintenance. Uh, we need new compressors. We need a roof replacement and the parking lot needs repaving. Uh, all told, this is in the area of a two to two and a half million dollars worth of work. Uh, none of these projects can be paid for out of currently available cash in the Ice Arena Fund. And further, uh, because of the COVID shutdown has eliminated all revenue, our operator is fast running out of cash. Uh, and that may be a problem for us. Uh, Finance Director Cliff Mason, uh, and Nick at the arena are working on a plan to bond for repairs. And pay the debt service out of the Ice Arena revenue. And the way it's been operating the last couple of years, it hasn't been able to do that, but it previously paid more debt service than that, uh, about four or five years ago. Uh, I do not feel it would be appropriate to subsidize the Ice Arena with general fund revenue. I think it needs to be self-supporting, but I think it's. Probably the nicest building the city owns and, and one of the nicest Ice Arena facilities in southeast Michigan. Uh, it's something we should be very proud of, and I think it's something we need to maintain. Uh, Cherry Street Mall, uh. We've been working with the DDA to put forth a proposal for some minor improvements to Cherry Street Mall that we think will improve its appearance and functionality. Uh, this should be on the next regular agenda if we get the, uh, quotes back in time. Uh, basically what this involves is removing the benches and the tables that are built in. Uh, that will require some significant concrete repair, uh, if we remove the tables because the. Foundations that those tables are supported on, uh, stick up above the level of, uh, the surrounding concrete in many locations. And if we just remove the tables, we'd have a tripping hazard. So we do hope to have something on that, and then we also intend to explore grant opportunities for some more significant improvements, uh, in the long run. Uh, water plant, uh, we think everything's in place to complete a remote installation of the ozone purification system. We've got the data connections that are required. We've got the cameras and the stands, uh, to support the cameras while we're doing the work. Uh, the electronic control modules for the ozone equipment has arrived at the plant. Uh, I've asked Jeff to schedule a test with Pure Flow. Uh, I wanted to do a test first to be sure everything is operational and ready. Uh, so that when we're, when we do bring everybody in for the full installation process, we don't have any equipment issues. Uh, at the worst case scenario, if for any reason we're not able to complete this installation. Uh, and the ozone system is not functional before the algae blooms in Lake St. Clair. Uh, we do have the alternative of switching to Great Lakes Water Authority Water Supply, and it just involves throwing a couple of valves. Uh, we don't think that's going to be necessary, uh, but it is there as a backup. The situation that occurred last summer was because the algae bloom occurred after the old, uh, ozone equipment went down. Uh, and, uh. We stayed on the city system. Uh, the problem is strictly a matter of taste and odor. It's not a matter of safety. Uh, it's just the algae makes the, the water taste bad. Uh, last item I've got is just another reminder that the notification system is fully operational and. You can get to it, uh, either by clicking on this, this document or going to, uh, www dot city of Mount Clemens dot com slash notification. Then I've got a list of what we've got scheduled, uh, right now for the upcoming meetings.
Does anyone have any questions for the city manager?
Yes, uh, I, I thought we had a for the meeting on June fifteenth, a local preference policy.
Uh, it should be.
Okay.
Put that back in. Oh, I can't edit this here.
And when are we going to have the strategic, um, planning meetings?
Uh, you should have gotten the survey, uh, the link to the survey today.
Yep.
Uh, we're going to be doing a doodle poll, uh, to, to actually schedule the meeting.
So are you planning in July or August or June or what's the plan?
I'm hoping to do it in June. Uh. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wait until I'm certain that we can have an in-person meeting unless, unless the governor changes things a lot with the, in the order. So frankly, I think public meetings are going to be one of the last things that are going to be approved to occur again.
Does anyone have any further questions for the city manager? Okay, thank you very much for your report. Um, we're going to move to the public participation number two. Um, at this point, we're going to unmute everyone, and if you wish to participate, um, in public participation, please give us your first name. And then when we call upon you for your turn, we ask that you give us your full name and, um, your address and be mindful of our two-minute rule. Would anyone like to get in line for public participation? Hearing none. Hearing none, we'll go ahead with commissioners, commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Campbell.
Yes, um, I've talked with the mayor and the city clerk and the city manager regarding. I've been walking around and riding my bike and the, some of the things I've been seeing, uh, that need to be taken care of, and soon as. We get back in business here, I would like to talk about. Code enforcement and following up on things. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Uh, Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to recognize the protests throughout the country because as a black mother of two sons, my heart is just heavy when I seen the murder of George Floyd. It's a doctor's senseless killing of my people, so I understand the frustration because we are mentally and emotionally tired of being oppressed. We have dealt with racial injustice and, and unequal justice for too long. I support peaceful protesting, but I don't support violence. If you want to make a difference, complete the absentee ballot application and mail it in and be ready to vote in the next election. I also want to. Take a moment and thank Pastor McDonald at Winter Circus Church for the free gas giveaway this past Saturday on, at the Marathon Gas Station on North Ratchet. Also Greater Morning Star Church on Rockerson with, uh, Dr. Terrell Martin. Is having a food assistance program every Monday this month, starting at one P M, with a drive-through food program. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hammond, for bringing up, uh, George Floyd because I, I too want to say that I feel, I, as I think. Everyone here on this commission does, um, absolutely horrified at what happened to him. And, um, I, I agree with you. I think that protests are. Certainly part of our, our rights as citizens of the United States, but the violence has nothing to do with that and it only. The violence almost is similar to what he does, what the, the police person did. It, it, it was just, it's, it's sad. I'm very proud of our city that we haven't had any of that violence. But what happened to Mister Floyd should never happen to any human being, black, Hispanic. American Indian, white, anyone. It's just wrong and, and those people should be punished. Um, I'm also with, uh, Commissioner Campbell. I, I think that we have to remember to keep our city up, and I think as we drive into the city. There's a lot of things that we could do to improve the appearance and, um. So we need, we need to look at that again as we go into the summer months now. That, um, I think they are release, opening up some restaurants now. I just came from. We have a place up in Grayling Township and up there the restaurants are open, and I will say it's working. Um, it's difficult for a very small establishment because they can't get much volume. But for a larger area, it, it did work and we wore our mask in there and then once you sit down, you take your mask off. But, um, it was very nice to be able to go out again and I, I hope, um, all of our restaurants are planning to reopen. Um, on the eighth when the governor said we could do so. With that, stay safe, everyone, and take care.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensor?
I would like to give a, a shout out to our graduates, for our, our high school graduates. I'm sorry that you haven't gotten to go to prom and you haven't had the home co-, you know, the, the, you know, the parade and all the other stuff. Um, and I'm sorry that there's been no fanfare for you. So to all of our Mount Clemens High graduates, congratulations, good luck. I, I hope that you have a wonderful future and to the people, uh, the, the, to our high school graduates like Don Williams, like Tayshaun. Um, who got scholarships. Good on you, wonderful job. Let us know what we can do to help you. And finally, Commissioner Campbell, happy birthday.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes. Uh, I too would like to express my deepest sympathy to the Ford, uh, the Floyd family. Um, it just, that clip and they keep running it just sickens me. I hope that, um, that, that we can all come together and heal. And I am very, very proud of our citizens, both black, white, brown, yellow, green, that live in the city of Mount Clemens, that we've all, we've all, um, stepped up to the plate and, and are in the process of the healing process. Um, the census, I want to thank Reverend, um, Ireland for, uh, putting, putting the stats out. It's my understanding, I think we're at about 68%.
Yep.
Uh, but that's not good enough. You know, we need to be much higher than that. Uh, that, that depends on our representation in Congress and, and over in Lansing and funding, federal funding and state funding. We need to get those numbers up, so we need to work on that. Also, uh, you know, it, once a bather, always a bather. It was 51 years ago that I graduated high school, still remember the ceremony. I am sorry that this year, uh, our students did not experience that. Hopefully they'll, they'll understand that, uh, that we all, uh, wish them well. And with that, once a bather, always a bather, and once a clemite, always a clemite. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I will too close with, um, happy birthday, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Hammond, both who just recently had, uh, birthdays this last weekend and last week.
Thank you.
So happy birthday to both. Um, I want to piggyback on the, uh, census information that Commissioner Voorhees was mentioning. Um, we are at a 68% as of, I think, last week, uh, 68% return rate, which, um, isn't awful, but isn't, isn't what we're hoping for. So I would definitely encourage you, it takes less than 10 minutes to complete the survey. Um, and it's, it's incredibly important. Uh, I want to thank Advancing McComb, they are going to be doing a Mount Clemens Counts, um, event that we just approved on Saturday, January, uh, sorry, wow, Saturday, June 13th, um, from 11 to 2:00 PM. And not only is it going to be a census event, but it's also going to be a really great opportunity for all kids in Mount Clemens. And the opportunity is that the kids will go to the event as well, or the adults can pick up the materials. But they'll be given a bag that contains a brand new soccer ball. It contains cones, um, I believe a, a tee shirt and some really other great stuff from LK St. Clair Soccer Club. And also it'll give them access to online instruction on how to became, become a great soccer player. So in this time, when we have all these, the, the, all kinds of, you know, time on, the kids have the time on their hands and, and all the parks aren't open and it's just difficult to, to do things outside. Um, there's the, there is a great opportunity to participate in this, um, soccer instruction. And if you decide that you don't want the soccer ball or anything like that, you can still go and get all of the information for the online instruction. So go ahead and I believe they're also going to be serving lunch. So it'll be a very, um, very exciting giveaway. And again, it's for everyone who's from Mount Clemens and it will be Saturday, June 13th from 11 to 2. Um, I'm really, yes.
Can I ask one question on the, the cer-, the census?
Yeah.
Do we know who hasn't filled out the census?
No, that information is not. That informa-, uh, well, let me s-, give the, uh, city clerk, uh, Voorhees can probably give us more information. Lisa, um, you want to address that question?
I apologize for messing things up here.
No, it's okay.
No, that's something that we don't know, but, um, the, that re-, that response rate, it was 68.4% a few days ago. That's a self-reporting or self-response rate. So it's not bad because that's, that's how many people have taken upon themselves to answer that themselves. But now the census is, is beginning, uh, this month to go door to door to those people who have not responded yet.
Okay.
So they know who those people are, but we do not.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering if there was anything we could do to encourage it, but we'll just continue to, to encourage them to do it.
Right, yeah. I mean, it, it's one of the, um, we always say that the census information stays, is not shared within other organizations. And so this is actually a good example of, we don't get that information, right, because of it, because of it not being shared, so. Uh, does anyone else, else have any census questions? Okay, so moving on, um, stru-, uh, I'm really excited about the strategic planning that we're going to begin. I encourage everyone to, um, to do the survey that was given, um, out today and do that as quickly as possible to get this process moving. And, um, I'm hoping that everyone has some open June schedules so that we can get this moving and get started. I mean, so many of the things that we're hoping to do hinge on, you know, making this plan the best that we can and then, um, aligning the goals of the city to that plan. So I'm, I really, I'm going to thank you for your enthusiasm and your participation ahead of time and, um, and really hope that, that you give it your all, so. Um, I also wanted to mention that I'm excited about the Ice Arena Special Meeting. I know that, um, you know, I, I wa-, I just really believe that the spa-, the Ice Arena is an asset for our community. I think that so many people from outside of our community come there and really, um, and have a positive experience of Mount Clemens because of how the Ice Arena is run and the state of, state of art, uh, facility that it is and the hockey, hockey and ice skating arena. So, um, I just want to make sure that we, um, that we know that this is a huge asset to our community and we want to make sure that we're taking good care of it. So, um, with that, I will thank everyone for coming to the meeting and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Okay. Uh, moved by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Hammond. Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
And those who oppose. Thank you. That ends our meeting tonight. Everybody have a great night. Take care.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.